Calling the Select Board meeting of Monday, Tuesday, May 25th, 2021 to order. This is a virtual meeting notice pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of coronavirus COVID-19. And as amended since, this meeting of Town and Berlin Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technology. The attendees of this meeting may attend via Zoom with both audio and video access or by telephone audio only. Is that good? Is that it?
Good.
Okay, everybody. So, called to order, and this meeting will begin with a reorganization of the Select Board for the coming year, following the May 24th, 2021 annual town elections. Congratulations, Select Board Member Stone. I will accept nominations for Select Board Chair for the coming year.
I'd like to nominate Peg Stone for Chair.
Okay, there is a nomination by Chris Keefe for Peg Stone as Chair. Any further nominations? Okay.
Do I hear a second?
I was gonna say, doesn't it require a second? I can second.
Is there a second? Okay, and there's a second. All right. No other nominations? All those in favor? Roll call.
Keefe, I.
Hawkins, I. Are we gonna have to do this in a different order where we have different titles?
All right, so that's a, that's a roll call unanimous vote, and I'm gonna hand, hand it over for additional nominations for Vice Chair and Clerk to new Select Board Chair, Peg Stone.
I am going to nominate Mr. R. Scott Hawkins for Vice Chair of our Select Board.
I second that.
Yay. As long as Ross doesn't have a vote, we're fine.
All right, do you want me to, I'll start. Keefe, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
There, we got the routine down now.
There you go. All right, we got it.
I guess, I guess.
Go ahead.
If, do I have to wait for Margaret to ask? I will nominate Chris Keefe for Clerk.
I second.
Keefe, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
There you go. It's done.
There you go. We are done. Yay.
Good. Nice. Thanks. Have a good, oh no.
Gotta go. No, it's a, it's an honor and a pleasure. Glad to be voted back. Thank you to the Town of Berlin. I appreciate your support for three more turns around the sun while I'm here. I can't say enough about this board, you know, working with Scott and Chris and especially Margaret, you know, we're four people with very, four different backgrounds, but can work extremely well together and can agree to disagree and come out to with whatever decision is best for the town. So I do, I feel honored to work with such great people. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I, and you know what? And honestly, to me, the only thing that changes is that I get to figure out how to do Select Board Vice Chair and make a chair. But, and then I, now I get to work with Margaret on the agenda. But, you know, as I mentioned, Scott and Chris are gonna, you know, and I are gonna continue to do what it is that we need to do and cover for each other and help each other. So, you know, we're gonna be off and running and being even stronger board with a year under our belts. So, away we go. All right, and then Chris, if I screw anything up, like on this order, could you just kind of?
I'll say, Madam, Madam Chairwoman. Excuse me, Madam Chairwoman.
Oh, but it's too much. Could you just do Peg?
Oh, I don't know. I think I got called that myself.
Madam Chairwoman, yeah, I think I, yeah, I used to do that to you. Okay. All right, so, um, our announcements, we, all right, so approval of minutes. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at the minutes that are out in our folder?
I did. I will make a motion to approve May 10th, May 15th, and May 17th open session.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Excellent. And no questions? All right, so we'll call for a vote. Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
Keefe, I.
It's unanimous.
Okay. We made it through the first change of order.
Done. What a, that was a success.
That was a success. You know what? This, this is as much as I can go these days. All right, so correspondence. Madam Town Administrator.
There is correspondence. The first piece of correspondence is a request that was received through Fire Chief Clark, and he'll address this further. A request for the Fire and EMS departments to utilize the current Historical Commission's room downstairs in the town offices when the Historical Commission moves out of that room. So Chief will elaborate on, on that request. The next is that it was correspondence we received from, a copy from Tower Hill Botanic Garden, recognizing 19 Carter for turning the Methodist Church into a welcoming community gathering place and the grounds into a beautiful space open to the public. So this was, this is a commendation for 19 Carter, and it was an invite for 19 Carter to attend the Worcester County Horticultural Society's event in June.
Yeah, that, those grounds look absolutely stunning.
Don't they? The, the stonework, everything is beautiful, the terracing. So, the other, there are two other pieces of correspondence. Sue Tarian of Linden Street has forwarded concerns to the Select Board regarding access from the town parking area on Linden Street through a deeded right-of-way through her property to a conservation area. I'm, I'm working on getting the details. I've, Mary has forwarded me the agreement, and John Annie is tentatively scheduled to meet with the Board next Tuesday evening to talk about that particular parking lot, as well as a couple of other things for conservation. So I'll do a little more research for your meeting next Tuesday night on that, on that particular item. The Board should have those, those concerns in writing. And then the final thing is that the library has notified the Board that Carolyn Hoddle has been hired as Library Assistant. Mr. Hodge requested that the Select Board grant a waiver of the pre-employment medical exam requirements. I have in turn, while that is allowed by the personnel policies and procedures, the current ones, I have in turn replied to him that my recommendation would be to not waive the pre-employment medical examination requirement, and I've outlined the reasons why in a recommendation to the Board. First of all, the requirement has been consistently complied with by all departments who have hired personnel since my arrival in July 2019. The requirement is in the town's best interest with respect to workers' compensation, and the new, the draft Personnel Policy Manual that was put out by HRS does not specifically provide for waivers to be granted. My strong preference would be that the requirements be consistent among all departments moving forward. So that is my recommendation to the Board.
So are there any questions that we have? I mean, let's, so Tower Hill, that's awesome. I'll plop that on my June article to the item. Nice recognition. We'll wait for Chief in a couple minutes. Sue, will we, probably more next week when conservation. So on the library, are there any questions that Chris or Scott have on Margaret's recommendation? And then we can vote on it?
Margaret, so in the, the policies that you quoted in your recommendation, it says that pre-employment may be required, not must be required, correct?
Correct.
And so, do you know what the, what are the general guidelines on what would make it more required versus not required?
There aren't any. This is the problem, and that's why I've expected consistency.
And that, I, I get where you talk about how it's, you know, for the respect of workers' compensation on something that might be pre-existing or not. Do we know what, what is the medical exam? This is poorly worded, but sort of looking for to be a library assistant.
It is really only what we do for the pre-employment medical is we provide a copy of the job description, and the medical provider actually looks at that job description and assesses the candidate to assure the candidate's ability to perform the essential functions of the position. That's it. So, in this particular case, it'll be walking, seeing, standing, hearing.
Lifting.
Probably minor lifting, yeah.
And we, to protect the privacy of, of the, the person, we probably just get back a yes or no. We don't get back like any detail.
Correct.
So, would you like a motion this evening?
The Board could, through the Chair, the Board could certainly vote on this. No action would be an effective denial of the request for waivers. So Board's prerogative on this one.
I, I would make a motion to support Margaret's recommendation to waive the pre-employment physical for any employees at this point.
To not, not waive.
Not, not waive.
I'm sorry.
Not waive. Is there a second? I'll second it.
Yeah, thanks. I, I'm still a little torn to that. I, so, the, the, I gotta end up supporting it because my, my overarching thing is that I believe in supporting staff where I don't have a strong overwhelming feeling. And on this, I would rather it be waived, but not in such, not a fairly strong way. And so I have no problem supporting Margaret on this.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is probably something that, you know, again, Margaret, to be consistent since you arrived a couple of years ago, that we remain consistent and that this is something as personnel is going through their mere 150-page document, that this could be one of the things that they hit and tighten with information. But I'd rather, I don't want to start playing yes and no, you know, for that. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? All right, let's put it to a vote. Stone, I.
Keefe, I.
Oh, sorry, Hawkins, I. I'm used to being third. I'm waiting for two of them before I spoke up. Hawkins, I.
All right, so that is unanimous.
I gotta, I gotta write the first time, but not the second time.
It's gonna take us a while. Okay. So we have a 3-0 unanimous decision to support recommendation as given by Town Administrator Margaret.
And, and just, and through the Chair, to Scott's point, and Peg, to your point too, there is absolutely opportunity to elaborate on these procedures to pinpoint where they may apply in the future and where they won't, but without it.
We gotta go with what we have.
Yep.
Awesome, thank you. All right, so are there any general public comments? Right, seeing none. We'll move to our General Department update. Chief Clack, if we could move him out of attendees and put him into our bucket. There he is.
I'm gonna step off camera. I can still hear you. I have someone trying to rescue a bird off of a net on my property, and I want to make sure they feel comfortable doing it. So, I can still, I can still hear you.
Quick, give him all the action items while he's gone. All right.
I learned a long time ago, don't feed, don't feed a bird stuck in a net or a screen honey. Not a good idea. Isn't that awful?
Hey, Chief.
Good evening, everybody. How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Good. Nice to see everybody.
You as well.
You wanna just like, wait a sec for Scott?
No, he said he could hear us, so let's get going, because there is another appointment right behind you at 7:30, so.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm gonna start in with the, with the request that Margaret talked about to you for use of the gym. What I learned in asking some questions, that there was a gym down there at one time, then it was, the space was reutilized. Now the space at some time may be coming open and available again. One of my personnel, Jasmine Morello, came to me and said, what do we need to do to have a gym? And I said, well, I think that you gotta get together with your fellow firefighters, but also bring in the rest of the team. Bring in the Blue Team, bring in the Fire Department Association. So she spent a lot of time talking with those people, and they came to consensus, which was followed up by a letter that I forwarded to Margaret. I'm a 110% supporter of this motion or this capability. It's really good. I, I, I probably wouldn't use a lot, but I go to my gym three days a week. So it's like to CrossFit. So it's like, I think it's really good. It's in the building. They can work out while they're on duty. They're available to respond immediately while they're doing it. And it's another good way to bolster the teamwork between the Blue and the Red Team, which is very good anyways in Berlin. But the police are in, the fires are in, and, and we can look at cleaning, painting, and then work the magic to acquire some gym equipment for the space. That's kind of where they are now. They're kind of like in a holding pattern now. And I know that, I wasn't sure when it would be empty and ready for repurposing. So it's like, that's kind of like, they're waiting, ready to go and jump in and be prepared to use the spot when it's available. So they're being patient. So it's like, I was asked just to present it to Margaret and then to the Board, and it's like, anything I can do to help answer a question, if I don't know it, I'll go and find out. But they're talking about not a heavy-duty gym. I don't think we're gonna have any Olympic weightlifters in there, but like treadmills, rowing machines, bike, the skiers have become very popular lately. So it's like, a lot of things like that, that's good for the cardio, which is good for the performance, I, I know, of both public safety teams as we move forward, and plus it improves the health of the people. So, it's kind of like where they're sitting now with it. And it's like, it's a real, I think it's a really good item, them and their, and I, and I smile because they're working together on it to get it done. So it's like, I hope you positively consider it when it becomes time, when it's available. And it's like, and can help them out. They do a great, great job for the community. And, and this is really important thing for health and welfare, so.
So, go ahead. Sorry, Chris.
I was just gonna ask Margaret, what, remind me, when it, does the room become available?
Do we have a date?
Historical Commission has not specified when it becomes available. They are actively moving their things out, but they have some shelving. They have large items to move out of there still.
I thought we gave them a, a dropped a date, though, and they hadn't, they needed to let us know, was it December 2021?
Oh, that sounds late.
And they needed to notify us by a certain date if they were gonna need it longer. And...
Okay, that was, that was temporary storage in the old fire station, and I need to, I need to look at that letter to remember the dates.
Okay, sorry, I thought maybe that was that room.
So Scott, you were probably the last one in there out of all of us. How much stuff literally is in there to go?
It, it both feels like a lot of stuff, but a ton has been moved. And so, if I had to guess, I bet three-quarters of it is already out of the space. And as, as Margaret said, some of the remaining items are just big, too. And so, it is, you know, the, the Curjero Storage Building has a ton of stuff in it. It doesn't have a lot of room left. We're trying to, they're trying to empty out the Bullard House a little bit more, so the construction and other work that, that we want had to have happen can happen there. So somebody is still continuing to try to find places to put it. And I think that is gonna be the bigger barrier at the moment.
What, what's the building on Lincoln Street?
Old West School?
Yeah, is, Margaret, did we ever get any type of agreement? I know when June and, and Mrs. Wickstrom were here last, they had mentioned to us about moving items into there, and everyone seemed kind of shocked. Was there, is there any documentation that we need from that building?
I don't know that, I don't know that there is a lease agreement between the town and, like an excuse, an exclusive use lease agreement between the town and the Legion. So, that's something that we'd have to work on. So as it stands right now, without a lease agreement, the, the building is strictly the town's building, informal permission for the Legion to be using it. So we should be looking at a, we should be looking at a lease agreement.
So can we maybe schedule Historical a few weeks out, you know, let them know that they need to come to us with a plan with a date to move whatever items out, so that we can give Chief Clark time to go start looking for equipment and plan, you know, painting, cleaning, et cetera?
That makes perfect sense. A couple of weeks out. So we want to say June. The calendar.
But we're already pretty busy on the 7th and 14th.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, June 21st?
21st. Okay. So can we be very specific to them in what we're looking for? That it's a calendar? Well, all right, let's back up. That it's a lease agreement, right, that we need if they're gonna move their items to Legion Hall?
That's gonna be between, that's gonna be between the Legion and the town, so we'll have to, we'll have to work on that.
Right. If I remember correctly, some of the readings I've done lately, the Historical Commission is mostly advisory to us. Aren't we the final-to-arbor decision-makers? I mean, obviously, we don't want to do things to scare away volunteers, but...
All right. So, but I mean, we, we need a definite date from them. We can't allow this to slide and slide and say, oh, we'll take an hour here, we'll take an hour there. It's gotta be on Friday, insert date, you know?
So, I, I think they would go faster if they had a place to put plate things.
Yeah.
Because they were working with the Legion to get places, and then we told them that that's a problem. And so, you know, I, like, physical things need physical places to go. And so if we help by, by saying, hey, we have freed up this space in town to put places, things, that would probably help substantially in getting stuff out of that room.
Well, I think the first step is probably to send an email saying that by June 21st, we'd like, you know, the Fire and Police would like to use that room.
Effective July 1.
Physical education.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, I think we can speed it up substantially if we designate and find a space to put that, those items or other items.
I think they had some idea about where they were gonna put it, some of that stuff, didn't they, Margaret? I thought it was the firehouse.
Yes. Yep, the old fire station, yes.
Okay. All right. Right, so that's good. All right, so Chief, at least we'll have kind of sort of a plan to you. Mid-June, we'll have you come on back to at some point, and then definitely get your, your team and the red team in there, or the blue team in there, and obviously for their safety.
Do we already own the phys, the, the equipment, or is there a budget for equipment? Or, I mean, how is it gonna be equipped?
It used to be a gym, before it was, you know, storage. So I don't know whether they still have that equipment, but a lot of people are donating their equipment.
Chief, Chief mentions, Chief mentions in his, in the letter here, or the group mentions in a letter, that their, the Firefighters Association has some exercise equipment, but it's currently inaccessible, inaccessible due to lack of space. So they could move that over.
All right.
Because wherever that is currently being stored, can we store historical items there and just swap things around?
Isn't?
I believe that the, the current storage of the old equipment is at the rear of the training EOC room in the cellar. So it's in the back, just up against the wall. It's aged. There, there, there has been discussion in the building about some type of, doing some type of fundraising to, to get some new equipment. And it's like, it's still, that's in the crawl stage, and they're getting ready to like run with that. They're gonna have to run pretty soon to keep up with your timetable. So it's like, I think it needs to be, what they have needs to be replaced. The stuff is older. Some of it's broken. Some of it needs to make its way to the dumpster. So that's where they are, kind of, at 30,000 feet.
You know, what I can do too is I can reach out to Peter Hoffman, our EDC guy, and see if he can either talk to all the gyms that are up on...
Island.
Thank you. And see if there's anything that they have up there, or any, anything that he might be able to do, or if there's anything left at Solomon Bond. Worth an ask, all I can say is.
Good idea. Thank you.
Right. Chief, are there any other updates that you want to share while you have all of this?
Well, I, well, we, we, we did the contract extension, which was like, put a smile on my face. We're still waiting for the state, which is kind of like, makes me kind of like, say, you know, I'm a street guy, so that drags on that way. But Margaret was outstanding to work with, and it's like, it's, hard to say no to Margaret when she needs something done. So it's like...
Margaret, do you have any updates on Chief's contract with the, because it's in the Senate now, isn't it?
In the Senate, and I don't have any updates from this week yet.
Okay. All right.
We're moving forward.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other? Go ahead.
No, it's like, really, they had a significant incident in the 40 Caves area. The outcome wasn't very positive, but it was an unknown where the location was to start. Cell phone coverage was poor, and it was on the north side of the 40 Caves towards Sergeant Chatterner's house, and I believe it's the Peach Hill, is that the Peach Hill Conservation Area? Do I have it right? Correct me if I'm wrong. So it's like, I'm still learning these things, but it's that, on that right side of, as you go out Lancaster Road there. And it took a little bit of time. It was a very serious call. So it's like, the, the guys had to make some adjustments after that. So it's, this one wasn't positive, but the effort was very positive from both. Again, I hate to keep using the team, red team and the blue team, but they worked well together on that one. Made contact in, it was in a third to half a mile off the road. So it was that little Kubota tractor with the stretcher on it made its way in, and they made an extraction and got the medics tied in and so forth. So took some time. They did a good job. Those are tough calls. We had limited resources. They had to check Allen Road, Lancaster on the south side, and then Lancaster on the north. I guess they weren't able to get a pin because of the poor cell service to really hammer the location down, like we were one other call there recently. But that's life in the fast lane that we have to deal with all the time. So it's like, the effort was there, the concentration was there, and the professional one was, was there. Just, you know, come, is not always what we want, but, so they worked on that. And we've made some corrections on that on communications. It's even a poor spot geographically for our radio system. So we've made some arrangements with the Chief, Fire Chief in Bolton, where we can come up on his frequency, which is, I guess that's high ground to the north of that for Bolton, and we can get on that. And we also have put into service a repeater got from the, the River Bridge Agreement as part of that. It's a mobile repeater for the radio. The only thing is it has to be brought to the scene in a vehicle and then hooked up. So it's not automatic, but it's, it's, it's a good option B. And so it's simple as call and dispatch, which is the regional one, request use of the Bolton frequency, just like we do now when we go northbound or southbound on the highway between 117 and go to work. So, we're trying to make those conditions less exciting for the people. And it's like, this, it's, it's really not a good scene when you don't have radio communications and you can't put your people where you want them to go. So we're working on that to make it better. But it's just, it's just a geographic area. And Chief Galvin's working really good on improving that whole system. He's got a good handle on that. That's a down-the-road type of thing before that's done. That's enough on that subject matter. Is there any questions on anything that you come up through from, on the town meeting that we were involved with? If not, I can jump right into the, jump into the April activity report for you and work it through that.
Through the, through the Chair, I just want to say thank you again to Police, Fire, Highway. I know Peg, you did this at town meeting, but without their work, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have happened. So I just want to thank everybody for their efforts on that.
Absolutely.
Always a pleasure. Okay, I think that you saw the reports. I know that we, due to some vacation time, we didn't get you the five-mention report, but as soon as that's ready, which should be within the next couple of days, I'll forward that to the TA, through Mary, and get that to you. to the T A through Mary and, uh, and get that to you. So you can look at that. And the next time, if you have any questions, just sing out with that. That's usually a pretty good report. A lot of detail on that. And, uh, I learned something every time I look at it because it's still stuff that I'm learning about certain buildings and this and that. And, uh, he has a lot of information on that. Okay. On the April responses, we had seventy three responses in, uh, in April. I could keep my fingers crossed. There was no structural fires. That's always a good thing. There was twenty one fire related responses, thirty one EMS responses. There was seven motor vehicle accidents. Uh, thirteen public service requests and one well being checked that, uh, we go out and someone may not have, might be a lot of, uh, mail in the mailbox. Someone might not be answering the phone when they should be. So that's usually when you see a well being check and that was a positive well being check. So it's like, uh, we got involved with that. Just a next item there is just a quick kind of update of where we've been since eighteen and some numbers and like that. Like I said before, you'll see the fire prevention activity report soon. The next two, uh, bullets here are emergency management related. And they're in the works at with M E M A at different levels. And all this stuff goes directly to your board. If you don't, if you see the final report and don't like it, doesn't get done. Your board has is the final say as much as the work that I do on it. It's going to be, it's going to be a partnership between, uh, fire, police in, in the other agencies that we work with in the Board of Selectmen. You have final approval and it goes right to the select board. And, uh, and as soon as those, uh, two issues are at a point where they can be shared with you in like a ninety plus percent completion that you can look at them and review them and have your input, I'll get those to you. We're close with the E S E M P, which is Electronic Competence of Emergency Management Plan. And we're still working on, uh, uh, the R E P C, which is the Regional Emergency Planning Committee, which is, uh, I think we went over at Bolton, Berlin, Lancaster, Harvard, Devens, and, and it sounds like Clinton's in. So those are all working. The real, they're really starting to gain, especially the R E P C is gaining a lot of traction. And but this all goes through you guys. And it's when I'm done with it and I feel like I got to come a good document to share with you, I'm going to share it with you. Give you plenty of time to review it, ask any questions you have. And, uh, it will, and I can't believe that there won't be changes made after your review with the knowledge that there is there institutional knowledge about the town of Berlin. So it's like, again, I'm new to it. My people have been reviewing it as I move along. But you guys are also know a lot about the town. And we'll have, I know you'll have some good input on that to change. So those two things are moving, moving really good. And that will really bring a lot of emergency management capability to the town in a lot of different ways. Prepare us to something happen just Berlin. These other people would come and help us, which they would anyways, but it's in a very structured manner. And, uh, you need the structure. It's not the time to have people freelancing. Uh, and it's like, uh, and all those people are buying on the structure. So it's like, it's really, it's actually a really, really good group to work with. One thing that was kind of new was brought to my attention by the Fire Marshal is, is a, is a request to, uh, to cha, to add some items to the Fire Department fee schedule. The first one there you see is a bidirectional antenna. They call it a B D A. And what that does, that's a requirement in the building code when we get into some of these commercial buildings or a really large residential that allows for the safety of firefighters by having requiring a certain level of radio communications from inside the building to the command structure that's outside the building. Some of the buildings with all the steel, uh, in the construction type that, uh, swallows up radio messages. And you never want to mix or miss a radio message during an emergency when someone's calling you for help. So we spend a lot of time doing these. And right now, the B D A is, uh, is, there's no fee structure to charge to do it. And it's probably two to five hours, depending on the billing, to get all the testing done. They do a lot of testing with the regional dispatch to see what's coming in, what can't, or what can't come into them and what comes out. So it's like, uh, there's a lot of time, a lot of Ts to cross and Is to dot when they do that testing. So and there's a lot of, there's some radio people there, there's construction people, the owner, and then the, uh, a representative from the Fire Department. It's in the building code. It's a requirement. And, and, uh, it's something that's needed to my heart because it's personal safety. So it's like, uh, but we're not able to charge a fee to do it. You know, we spend a lot of time. So they wanted to charge a flat one hundred dollar fee that's paid for by the whoever's got responsibility. You see, it's, uh, someone in control of the building. And, uh, and you go from there. It's a one time charge for them and it covers all the inspections that we have to do that are related to the B D A. And it would just go on our current fee schedule. The other, uh, three items here is a food truck application inspection and permit for twenty five dollars. Uh, cooking application inspection and permit for twenty five. And that's both commercial and if, and if there's some type of, uh, temporary cooking put up in its, in, and if there's an inspection required by it, that's either in the five minutes regulations or the, or the billing code, and that would cover that. And then also a movie event application, I guess. Not since I've been here, but in the past, you've been blessed at, uh, well, I guess there's two ways to look at it, but all the things that go on with doing a movie or having someone come in with that kind of a request. So that's just a basic review of their, of the safety plan for that. Uh, and then issue inspections as required and then issuing a permit. It was, uh, a flat hundred dollars for that. Just a request to go on our current schedule and it just kind of covers the cost of the people of the amount of time that's being addressed with that issue. I don't know if, if, uh, I'd like to make that request through the chair, please.
Absolutely.
Like, uh, is there any specific questions you have on those? Some of the applications like, uh, I, I don't, I have to be honest with you. Other than my marathon experience, I don't have a lot of movie event application experience, you know? So I'm not real familiar with that one, but the other ones I dealt with for years. So it's like, uh, the B D A's new since I retired also. So that's something I'm learning about, but as soon as they told me what the concept was, I said, I, I, I used to, uh, use it in some of my E M C buildings because of the size and construction type. So I know exactly what it is. So it's like, as soon as they said they were going to do, I said, oh, that's a good thing. So it's like, uh, but if you have any questions, I can try, I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability.
So what, what defines a movie event? If I have four friends in my backyard, am I going to have to watch a movie? I'm going to have to do a hundred dollar permit?
No, I think that's, uh, the way it was explained to me, Scott, good question. Thank you. It was like, if someone came in and Jennifer Goddard wanted to have a movie in Berlin and, and just to set the safety plan, the site safety plan, to set what they were going to do, it was some type of production. You know what I mean? Uh, not, yeah.
This is not watching movies. This is, this is filming movies.
Yeah, if they come in and want to do, uh, I, I don't want to, yeah, whatever they want to do, you know what I mean? It could be one end to the spectrum to the other.
Yep.
So that's just something that covers the cost of the people who are being involved with that. And it's a partial cost savings on the time that they spend to do this.
For, uh, so that was my confusion because I saw movie and events and I'm like, so if I have five people in my backyard, I'm paying a hundred dollar fee. But this is, this is filming like TV production and movie production.
Yes, sir.
Sort of stuff. Okay.
Yeah.
Food truck applications to the, if a food truck operates in Berlin, do they also need something for the Board of Health?
Uh, that's a good question. I, in my past experience, yes, but I'm not sure what the Berlin Board of Health does. I know that the, uh, they do need it for some, because they usually have propane storage and all those kinds of things with it. So it's like, uh, I'm not, I, I'm not sure how many local boards and, and so forth are involved with that. But I know the Fire Department is. And in my past experience, the Board of Health was always involved. It was kind of, you're kind of like, actually like, uh, tag teaming, you know? So it's like, uh, but I'm not, I, I have to be honest with you, Scott. I'm not sure here.
I, I, I'd love to, I, I don't think there's a great answer to this, but what is like the communication? Because if a business has a physical presence in town, it's easy to know they're there and, and arrange things. But if a food truck just wants to spend an afternoon in, at South Common or something like that, I don't know how they know ahead of time who they need to get permits from. Uh, and I don't know how it is easy to just call up the main town phone number saying, hey, I want to do a food truck. What do I need to do to, to get it to that?
Well, I think, yep. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Finish, Scott. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, it might be the right thing to do. I just, uh, to have a, a, a permit and a fee, I just, how, how do we make sure that people who want to comply can comply?
Go ahead, Margaret. You got it?
I was just, I was just going to weigh in. Pre-COVID, um, we had actually started looking into establishing food truck regulations in town or, or food truck policies and procedures. That is an unfinished, um, that is an unfinished item that could help wrap all of this up together.
Good point.
Chris, any questions?
No, I'm good.
So should we take a vote to support this and maybe have like the, the food truck application contingent upon the other regulations that are going in? Because I would hate to say food truck bam, you owe us a hundred dollars, really without the one, two, three, four, five that they need to do.
Yep. Um, the town also does have, um, film permit, right? I mean, if it has adopted film policy permit. So maybe that's also something that we could incorporate. In that, I'm wondering if the chief would be willing, through the chair, I'm wondering if the chief would be willing to wait until June first for board action on this. So we can kind of pull together everything that we do have and make sure that they complement, um, each other and they'll go together. Is that okay with you?
Certainly.
Is that okay with the board?
I like the idea because I am fine with these, but I'd love to see them sort of, again, things streamlined so that businesses that want to come into town and abide by our rules is just as simple for them to do as possible. And if that means we already have a movie event, fee structure, we just add a hundred dollars who would include in it an inspection or review and permitting by the Fire Department. So his costs are covered and taxpayers are not footing the bill, uh, to have people come into town and block traffic for a while.
And, and that's, and that's a perfect fit. And, and I go, again, I go back to my marathon practices and experiences that you want, like Scott said, one stop shopping. You want to grab a folder or some paperwork that would cover whoever's involved on the, on the, uh, on the food truck. It would be Fire Department, Board of Health, whoever. You want a food permit for a truck, you get that paperwork at the town hall and everything that you need to do is clearly spelled out on it. I think that makes huge sense. And, uh, thank you, Margaret. That makes, that makes it much easier to address it like that.
I, I, I agree. I think it's probably a good idea to get all the information you can uh, for something this important and because there isn't anything on the agenda to say, let's, you know, that we're going to take a vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Were you, excuse me, chief, were you looking at having these effective July one, start of the fiscal year?
No, well, well, have it effective when it's, when it is effective. It only makes sense to put it all together. And when it's ready and it's a finished product and everyone's happy with it, then we'll bring it out, roll it out. You know what I mean? And if I have to come back to the board and again, and say, we got this out and we had included that in the information that went to the board prior to the Fire Department Activity Report, they could review it. They may drive some questions or whatever, you know what I mean? And I think that's a really good, uh, a way to know. And if one of the, if one of the board members gets asked in the community, they're aware of it, know what it is and, and clear with it. And then, and it goes down to their inspectors that do the job, make sure it's done right. Okay. And then the last bullet is the EMS Collections Working Group, which, uh, request to write off, the initial one is, uh, I submit through the chair, a request to write off for two thousand fifteen EMS responses that are past statute for a total amount of five thousand three hundred and two dollars and twenty nine cents. So that came down through our group, through the final collection agency, and it's past time that we can even collect on them. So it allows June to like start to really tighten up those older ones as we move forward. And she does a really good job like with that. And, and it's like, uh, it just gives her something to like, put all those numbers together in a nice, clean way. And then we move on to newer stuff.
All right. So to help speed this along, because I know that our appointment, we're about twenty minutes behind. Are there any other questions or can I get a motion on that amount?
I would make that motion, although it'd be great if in future months we get the detail behind them.
Okay. Well, I know that I, I can give that to him. Could I have that on a piece of paper? So it's like, uh, it's just an amount. There's no, the only detail on there because of HIPAA is
Right.
maybe some dates. That's all. You know, the amount. There's no names, nothing. So, yep, I can do that. I'll get that to him.
That's fine. Uh, so I'll make the motion to write off for twenty fifteen EMS, uh, due to past due of statute for the amount of five thousand three hundred and two dollars and twenty nine cents.
I second that.
Excellent. Uh, any other questions? All righty. Can we get a, a vote? Stone eye?
Hawkins eye.
Keith eye.
There you go. It's unanimous. Thank you, chief.
Yep. And then just the last one is just an F Y I for you where we are this fiscal year with our EMS billing and credit. There's the April amounts. And then there's the year to date.
Yep.
So I, I know you're busy, got a lot to do. So it's like, uh, I will sign off here and good luck with the rest of your meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Nice to see you always. Have a great long weekend. Stay safe.
Take care. You also.
Thanks.
Bye bye. All right. So next up on our agenda, we're a little bit late, is the public hearing of the local licensing authority. Transfer of the liquor license, beer, wine, malt package store from R W J beverages management to the wine cellar to, please forgive me if I butchered the name, Shaw Kesba Corp, doing business as the wine cellar licensed premises of One Highland Streets within BJ's and the proposed store manager, Deepak Bagat. How did I do? Close? Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Sure. Thank you, Matt. Thanks, board. Um, I'd be happy just to give a, a brief introduction if, if that works for you.
Absolutely.
All right. Perfect. Uh, so this is the transfer of the section fifteen package store license, uh, which is currently doing business as the wine cellar in Berlin, uh, located within uh, the BJ Spaza One Highland Commons. Um, along with me tonight are the two principals, Ashan Keshav Corp, who is the applicant, Kalpech Patel, as well as Deepak Bagat. Yep. Mr. Bagat, uh, along with being one of the principals of the corporation, will also be the liquor license manager. Uh, so very experienced licensing group here. Uh, both of individuals have owned other package stores, very successful, responsible package stores in the past. They certainly understand uh, the rules and responsibilities that come along with liquor license. They're both tip certified. Uh, all employees of the applicant will be required to be tip certified as well. There's no major anticipated changes to the store whatsoever. Uh, they'll be looking to retain as many employees as they can. So should be very seamless. Uh, but as I said, a, a very experienced group, um, who, who is excited about, uh, doing business in the town. Uh, there is a pledge of license to Rockland Trust, who is financing the transaction. Um, so that's the only sort of slight wrinkle, I suppose, on the application. But with that, I can answer any questions the board may have, uh, and Mr. Bagat and Mr. Patel can as well.
Margaret, there anything from your side? I know that, uh, we're working on some type of license authority, I think steps, aren't we? Process steps?
Yes, um, they have act, they have met all the requirements, um, on the application for the transfer of license. So there is nothing additional they need to do on our end. Chris, Scott?
I just want to note, because it, it doesn't make any sort of legal difference. I'm, I'm fine supporting this, but that the, the previous owners were actually quite active in town and supporting some charities in town. And I hope there's some civic mindedness and, uh, as they go forward. And if they get approached by organizations that say you've helped out in the past, you continue to help out specifically, I believe they, they've been a big supporter of the food pantries, wine and beer sale fundraiser. And, and frankly, they benefited from it too, because I buy several cases a year from there of wines that I've learned about from the fundraiser. So, uh, happy to support local businesses.
Um, how, just curious, is the, um, is the selection going to remain the same or change a bit? Or you're not sure?
Yeah.
This is a personal question.
Do you have any personal requests?
I like many of the beers that they have.
Yeah, these, as I said, these guys are very experienced liquor store owners. A lot of their stores feature a lot of the local craft beer. So I'd imagine just more of an assortment, if at all possible. But yeah, they, they should have a very good selection of beer and otherwise.
Good, good.
I know, especially as we get towards the fall and that's when all the fun beers start to come in. All right.
So would you like a motion, Madam Chairwoman?
Yes, please.
All right. I would make a motion to approve all of the above on our agenda.
I second the transfer of ownership.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's call for a vote. Stone eye?
Hawkins eye.
Keith eye.
That's unanimous. Thank you so much, gentlemen.
It's gonna take me a month to get used to going second.
I know, I'm like waiting on Chris. I'm like taking notes.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Good point, Scott. I, I hope that they will continue to support the food pantry.
I think they will, you know.
I think they.
I mean, Highland Commons gave us their word on, you know, cleanup day and they held true. So I'm thinking that we're going to have some good partners up on top of the hill, both sides.
Yep.
All right. So running still a little bit behind, Mr. Spencer, is he in the audience?
No. No, and, and through the chair. So I haven't received a response from Jim as to his attendance at this meeting or the second option, June 1st. But all I ask of tonight then is that the board members just review the draft changes made by the district's legal counsel to the proposed special legislation in preparation for possibly meeting with Jim on Tuesday, June 1st. Okay.
And I also.
And then again, go ahead, Chris.
I was just gonna say, can I also request that Margaret contact our special counsel for some guidance on whether we can do local elections rather than, you know, the in November? If we could go back to having, you know, the election in May when we have our election.
I think that's going to take a change of the regional agreement.
It would.
We could, but that's, that's changeable, so.
Well, I mean, I think originally they had said they just can't do it, and I never got a real good answer why. But I, I just think it would work out a lot easier for them and probably for us too.
Right.
All right. So move that down onto the next agenda.
I continue to hate to think of how much money and time has gone into us having to have this election. Because we wouldn't need to change the legislation had it passed before town meeting or town, before the town elections. And so this is just continuing the, the state caused costing us the town and the state taxpayer dollars to work on something that there, there is no controversy around this whatsoever. We want to have the election, the school board wants to have the election, the voters want to have the election. We tried to have it in November, we tried to have it in May, and we continue to sit here waiting for the state to allow us to have the election for a position that all of us want to have an election for.
Well, and I think that at the very beginning, I think the problem was that there really was no point person to say, okay, everybody who wants to run needs to get the paperwork in.
And it, and it was a new election during the height of a pandemic that we caught a little after a thing. Had the state just said, when we asked for like, oh, could you make a special exception and let us do it on the ballot? Or let us have a special election at the same date and time, but those were both turned down. And so for six months, we've been waiting for them to say we could have had it at the regular town meeting. And now that's failed, so we have to do another bill that has to go through the whole process all over again.
Right.
And the entire thing could be made easier through a change to the regional agreement allowing, allowing the election of regional school committee members on annual town elections. They would know, they wouldn't have to go to the state by a certain deadline to get names on a state election ballot.
Right.
Okay, we will take this up at a future meeting. All right, Mrs. Nadowitz, you're up.
Okay, well, let's start with COVID and the reopening. It's all, it's all happening. So effective on May 29th, the state's COVID restrictions are going to be lifted. And the face covering order is going to be rescinded with, with limited exceptions. Face coverings are still going to be mandatory for individuals on public and private transportation systems. So COA van, for example, healthcare facilities and other settings hosting vulnerable populations such as congregate care settings. Additionally, in our buildings, we are still going to require that masks be worn for a period of time in any common spaces. So the state of emergency, the Commonwealth state of emergency is going to be lifted on June 15th. And as you know, this is kind of everything associated with the state of emergency is kind of a moving target at this point. The governor submitted a bill to the legislature to allow for some transition period for multiple things that were required or that were allowed in, in COVID orders, including this. It changes to the open meeting law and extensions of the virtual meeting provisions. Also, outdoor seating extensions for restaurants and, and other things. So it is going to require legislation to, to allow for extensions of some of these COVID provisions. And hopefully the legislature will act promptly on those. Unlike certain special legislation, which, you know.
Sorry, sorry.
So Massachusetts is also discontinuing its, its online pre-registration vaccine portal. And but residents who are still in need of vaccines can still go to the vaxfinder.mass.gov website to find all available locations and hours of operation. Most sites are now offering, they're welcoming walk-ins. So it's no longer a matter of vaccines not being readily available. People should, people are encouraged to go ahead and get their, their vaccines. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the town office building, the town offices are open for workday business transactions from 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM. I do, boards and committees can certainly still hold their, their fully remote meetings unless and until the Baker Administration and legislature rescind the COVID remote meeting provisions. So I, I certainly expect there to be some permanent changes in the open meeting law due to what we've seen throughout COVID. So we just have to wait and see what those provisions will be. On finance, June has issued the end of year accounting instructions, closeout instructions to all departments, boards and committees. We are going to be abiding by a strict deadline to make sure that departments, boards and committees have reconciled their own internal finance spreadsheets with the accountant's numbers. Because June is going to close out this year on a, in a timely manner and will not be waiting indefinitely for, for boards and committees to submit, to submit their year-end worksheets. So she's made that clear. The library septic project is coming to a close, and I notified the board earlier today that Bill Brookings, the health agent, has said that their work is absolutely top notch. And he's, he was very pleased. He's done his final inspection. So that project will be closing out very soon. Energy Committee. So the Energy Committee, I'm going to be emailing them, if I didn't already today, I can't remember, to ask that they schedule a meeting in the near future to decide on when they're going to act on any supply rate source recommendation for, to execute a lock-in rate on the supply, on the supply agreement with Constellation. A few other items that I mentioned to the board and I put in the folder with my TA report tonight. The Energy Committee has voted to recommend that Beacon Integrated Solutions serve as a consultant on the solar exploration project to look at multiple town properties and the potential for solar at those properties. So I would like to ask the board for permission to sign this contract. This is the Metta grant funded contract, $12,500 to allow Beacon to start proceeding with, or Beth Greenblatt to start proceeding with her work as the consultant. There is also another letter of agreement that I've spoken with Beth Greenblatt about regarding two specific other projects. The first is the negotiation, not negotiation, but the agreement with AMP, the solar power purchase agreement that the town has with AMP. You might recall that they have asked the town to execute a fourth amendment to the agreement. I have held off on that, and I would like Beth, as our agent, to really look through the agreement and the three prior amendments to make sure that any amendment would be in the town's best interest. And the other thing is to serve as the town's agent or representative of the town in negotiating a pilot agreement with ZPE. And I'm sure you all recall this as well. ZPE maintained that they were tax exempt, that their, their assets were tax exempt. But on March 26th, legislation was passed that confirms that their assets are in fact not tax exempt. So ZPE is either going to be paying personal property tax moving forward or they have, they will have the option to enter into a pilot agreement with the town. So we would want Beth to serve as, I would, I would recommend and ask the board to support Beth serving as, as a representative of the town in these negotiations. So I'm looking for the board's support on both of these things once legal has approved the form of the agreements.
So Margaret, do you need a motion tonight or?
I would appreciate that. So the motion, I would ask that the board vote subject to review by, by town council.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, you like that? I would just add one thing that, just to be sensitive, I did see in the paper where Mr. Potus has passed away.
Yes, yes.
So just ask to be sensitive to the family.
Yeah.
Scott, did you have a question?
No, I'm fine.
So you want to vote?
Yeah, motion and a second. Let's have a vote. Stone eye?
Hawkins eye.
Keith eye.
You go, Margaret.
Thank you very much. Okay, now next. I don't have much more. Let's see. We have begun a, a limited, small-scale reorganization of, of offices here in this building. As I explained in my TA report, Veteran Services will be moving to the current tax collector's office space. I will be moving to the current Veteran Services office space adjacent to the select board's office. And the tax collector will move to my current office space. And there will be a doorway connecting the treasurer collector's office, which has been a long awaited move. And there will also be a counter open to the public that's across from the town clerk's counter. So for the convenience of the public, this, this I think is going to serve as a very good small-scale reorganization. And finally, the, the copier and the mailboxes will be moved to a recessed area of the main hallway. So everyone can access them and the mailboxes will be secured. We have not yet received the annual lease revenue report for Boundless Adventures from River Bridge. I was, I was informed that it would come in May. If we don't receive it by May 31st, I'll ask, I'll ask River Bridge or the Senes to please provide that to the town for the prior year. And I have also made an initial contact with Mast dot, the projects, construction projects division regarding next steps in a future Route 62 corridor project that would extend from Gates Pond to Five Corners. This would be a very large transportation improvement plan, program project, a multi-million dollar project. So we're going to start looking at the steps to proceed toward that, toward that project. And that's all I have for today. Oh, I'll be out of the office from tomorrow through the weekend. But I will be available to the board by, by cell in, in an emergency.
There will be no emergencies. Enjoy your weekend.
Thank you.
I'm hoping so as well. What are the next steps with, with River Bridge? You know, I think they were bruised at, at town meeting. I want to still figure out how we sort of support them. I think we, we would love to try to do a comprehensive change that includes things they would like and things we would like.
So the next, the net.
And selfishly, how do we get payment for the, the dues that are, that are passed to? There used to be, I think, a bucket of them, and I think the bucket is much smaller, but the largest single item in that is still owed.
Yeah. So I have, I, I've talked to Chris about this. I believe our next step is that our subgroup, our working subgroup for River Bridge, the town group, meet to really talk about what the town would see as its priorities, whether or not there are any things that we could, we could potentially discuss with River Bridge, like extending deadlines to perform certain things and, and stuff like that. So we really have to get those in order to determine what, if any, development agreement provisions the town would be willing to negotiate and able to negotiate. So that's going to be our next step is the subgroup meeting. That would happen. I, I'm guessing that's going to happen by mid-June. I haven't scheduled it yet, but I'm thinking by mid-June.
All right. Chris, any questions? I'm out. Nope.
I can't think of anything right now.
All right.
I have a few at the end.
Okay. All right. So moving down to old business. Discuss previously scheduled June 17th coffee talk to move it to a couple Mondays from now. For Scott brought this up, goals, or Chris, goals and objectives, community feedback. And then we will hold a session on the 14th with an open meeting with no public comment.
Yes, I would like to suggest to you, Peg and Scott, that we do both of these meetings on Zoom. I think per the governor, we are allowed to continue with Zoom through September 1st. I think maybe it may be more comfortable for some people. And I think we've had good audience participation. I know that even with the municipal building opening, you know, there will be still masks required in the building. You know, I'm, I'm anxious to get back to having regular meetings too. But I just think that with the participation from the audience, I think that we may have more by Zoom at this time than we would in person. So I wanted to get, you know, what, how you guys feel about this.
I agree. I think we've had more participation via Zoom than we had prior to going to Zoom. And I think, I, I like to figure out a way to maybe even on a long-term basis, not, not for discussion now, but some on Zoom and some in person, so that the people who don't do technology has ability. But people who, you know, can, it's just easy for, again, a working parent or someone who has a lot of things going on to half pay attention with this going on in the background than it is for them to drive and sit at, at town offices. That said, I, I think a sort of discussion on town goals and objectives. I, I struggle to figure out how to do that where there can be participation over Zoom, how we recognize people. I don't know, it, it could be, so I'd like, if we can figure out a way to do it so there can be participation, whether it's, you know, small, if there's, if there's more than X number of people, we will break into small groups and each one of us take a third of the audience and, and get some feedback from a, from a preset sort of script that all of us sort of start at the same spot at least, and then come back together for some sort of report or. I mean, if we end up with 25 people in the audience, I don't know, we have a conversation and feedback about the goals and stuff.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, it might be something we need to look into whether we can do that or not with a webinar or not. But, but I do agree. I think we do get, usually get, and especially if we advertise.
Yeah.
You know, we need to get the word out there that we're looking for feedback on goals for us.
And I say that with two people in the audience right now. When we've had, where we, we've typically had eight to 10 or 12 in the audience, we get to this point of the meeting. So we've clearly done something wrong today or something.
Well, you're, or maybe. We scared them away. Well, it's an off day too.
It's just too nice out. The sun sets nice and.
Or maybe, you know, we, we come together with either some sort of, you know, news that we can put out there on the unofficial pages and the official pages that this is what's happening and maybe they can submit them via email.
Right, right.
You know, just try to get, you know, maybe even drop off like a hard copy down at the general store, you know. You know, just try to get, you know, maybe even drop off like a hard copy down at the general store, you know, folks congregate down there again to pick up their lunch, slap it on the table, you know, maybe at the post office. So, you know, going back to Margaret's, you know, list of, hey, you want to get the word out, here's how to get the word out, you know, type of thing.
So would have like emails for each of us?
Yeah.
Or emails for the town administrator or Mary or someone can submit them to this email and then we could go through and discuss them and include the audience members.
Absolutely. And maybe include the ones that we've already talked about too. So if they're wondering, you know, what we're doing.
And that could generate some conversation too. By just bringing up the things that we've had on the list so far.
And the seventh is mostly gathering things to put on lists and maybe grouping these together, asking follow-up questions. We understand it's impact a little bit better because on the 14th, we'll sort of do some narrow down and some organizing of it. And, and just to, even if we, someone could raise a really good idea, that it doesn't mean we're not ever going to do it if it's not on the priority list. Some of things, people will raise an idea and the answer will be, oh, we'll talk to the fire chief and he just does it, you know, some things. I, I know when I, I just think of my job when I go and do team meetings at departments and say, hey, tell me everything you'd like our IT, your IT to do. I leave half the things on the list of things I could have done in an afternoon, which is always very satisfying. And so maybe there'll be things on those lists that we can just found out.
Yeah, and I would like to get, I, hopefully you agree that I'd like to get, you know, of course, feedback from Margaret too.
I'm going to pull up that old list that we shared things in common and we'll.
Yeah, because you know what? That list is now not that big of all the things that, I mean, because it, it was kind of weird how Scott and I and, and Chris, you know, kind of came up with the same things and very much did a lot of overlap, you know, with them are talking to each other. So.
Okay, well, then we just need to start getting the word.
So should we then, our individual lists, we should get to Margaret by next Monday so that she can have some ideas like how they're grouping so that we, because I'd hate to have a share our list for the very first time at the 7th.
Yeah.
And maybe that's the thing you want to, maybe we just share them all the seventh for the first time, but.
Yeah, I think, and we could send them to Margaret and then we could also have put them in a Google Drive where we don't, we don't converse with each other and.
Right, right.
Decisions, but.
Yes. Mary, would you be able to set up a Google Drive for them to put their, put their comments in? That would be a great, that would be a great idea.
You might want to stick those, those documents from way back, not that far back.
Pre-COVID, which was a decade ago, so.
Yes, so we can put those in it too.
Well, you know, while we're putting information out to the public too, you know, we can also ask them how they feel. You know, do they want to come in and hang out with us at 1870, you know, upstairs or, you know, one, one week this way, one week in person, something like, because we'll be going into our summer schedule soon too. So, okay.
So just to clarify, you're, the, the coffee talk that was previously scheduled for June 17th, you're okay moving that to June 7th for the goals and objectives, community feedback? Okay, great. And then June 14th, you'll plan on still doing the virtual meeting with, you'll do a virtual work session with no public comment or how are you going to do the June 14th one?
I, I think June 14th can still be, I think we're looking at both of them as virtual.
Yeah, okay. I just want to be clear.
All right. So the next item, I think we touched on a little bit, review the special proposed legislation for the Berlin Boilstein Committee.
Yes.
All right. So moving down to new business, remove and approve, move and approve. Oh my God, they're kicking in, remove. Hey, first impressions, review and approve draft open meeting law select board 2022 meeting calendar.
Can I, I'll give you a little feedback on that too, if you don't mind.
Oh, absolutely.
So one of the things I was looking at was the coffee talks. I mean, the rest of it I'm fine with, but if we were to, the, I mean, December's kind of a busy month. Do we want to skip it in December, say move it to January? And then maybe move the, I think there's one in March, we could move it to April because I think April was a good month for us to do the budget.
Yep.
That was pretty much my feedback. I mean, they could be evenly spaced, but to move the one out of December and move the one to April.
Yeah, because the whole point behind those was just to get community feedback. So you know, you don't want to have them if they start to lose their effectiveness. I'd rather still have them have the wow factor on them.
Yeah. I mean, if, if, if that's okay with you guys, if not, you know.
No, all right. So December will go to sometime in January and then March will go to closer to the end of April or maybe mid-April so that we can hit
Yeah.
town meeting and election. Okay.
Okay, so, all right, I propose then, I'll see if I can throw out some pretty clear dates here. Let me, let me just make sure that I've got them right. So I propose then that the coffee talk that was shown for December 16th, the board hold a regular meeting on the 13th, Monday that week. And in January, rather than the meeting on the 18th, have coffee talk on the 20th, Thursday.
Right.
And then in March, instead of coffee talk that month, have a regular meeting on, on the 14th.
14th, 14th.
17th, yeah. And then in April, have coffee talk on Thursday, the 21st, rather than having a Tuesday meeting that week. How's that?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Does it, does it look like they're kind of? Equidistant?
Yeah.
I, I might take the June one off.
That's what I was thinking too.
Yeah, because it's going to start to be summer. Yeah.
Well, we would have just sort of had a town meeting and we would have had one just the two months before. We might have decided that three times a year is.
Better than.
Good, yeah. I don't want to permanently say three times a year, but right now it feels.
And that would be a meeting on the 13th.
If we find a need for a meeting, like we are with the, with the goals and objectives, I mean, we might find the need for another feedback session with the public. And of course, they're always welcome every Monday night or unless it's Tuesday.
Absolutely. Okay.
On the, so there is an asterisk in June of next year, just to, just briefly. The state just recently established a state holiday, Juneteenth, which is June 19th holiday that is celebrating the end of slavery in the United States by Texas's vote to abolish slavery. So the town's personnel bylaws, the bylaws, do not provide for the Juneteenth holiday. So any observance of Juneteenth would require town meeting action. So I just want to note that. So this is not set in stone. And I, I don't even know what the schools are doing yet as far as next June. So that is something that would be evolving over the next year.
Margaret, is that our first article for town meeting this year?
No, I, I put a, I, I believe I've got a lot of placeholders already. I've just added it to a list of placeholders and that's something that the Personnel Committee would.
Our state, our town bylaws list what holidays we have. So every time we change a holiday, so we can't change the bylaw to say we recognize state holidays and the select board can decide. I mean, that, I, I, again, I'm always fine for shortening bylaws as opposed to lengthening for these exact reasons.
That's exactly what the HR consultant recommended and the Personnel Committee would like to, would like to bring to the board. So we'll work on that.
I'll add it to my list.
Okay.
All right. So are we good on dates? I think so.
I think so, yeah. Do you want to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Yeah, go to a vote. Stoneye?
Hawkins, I.
Keith, I.
There you go, Margaret. Rio, we are good.
Yeah, we're good. All right.
All right. FY '21 end of year appropriation transfers, COA Veteran Services and Treasurer Collector.
Yeah, these are, these are small end of year appropriation transfers that are being requested. The first is Council on Aging Director Wages. This is an amount that actually goes back to Victoria's date of hire where she was hired at a rate of pay higher than the available appropriation. So this will cover the short, the end of year shortfall. On the veteran's salary, I neglected to actually make the minimum wage adjustment for January 2021 in his FY '21 salary. So this actually closes that gap of $324 by the end of the year. And then finally, the treasurer collector incentive pay. Dennis received his treasurer certification in FY '21 and the town had adopted the statute that allows him to receive the extra $1,000. So this, this covers that $1,000. So those are the only three requests for tonight.
Any questions?
They're all coming out of reserves?
No, they're all being, they're all coming from another budget line. Yeah. So the Council on Aging Wages is, is actually coming from the same account, but from
A different line.
COA van driver wages, which weren't used in FY '21. Veterans wage adjustment, the $324 will be coming from the veterans benefits line, which is under expended. And then the treasurer incentive pay will come from the treasurer collector expense line. So nothing from reserve fund.
And FinCom has signed off on all of these?
FinCom is going to be taking them up at their meeting on June, I want to say June 16th, Wednesday, June 16th.
So we're, we're going to pass them contingent upon support by FinCom?
I would assume so.
Yep.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
All right. Let's put it to a vote. Stoneye?
Hawkins, I.
Keith, I.
Rio, you go, Margaret.
Hey, thank you.
Betcha. Next up is the Highway Superintendent Facilities Director Job Description Approval.
So this is the job description in the standard HRS format that we've been using for recent hires. Personnel Committee reviewed this, made some recommended red lines and approved it with the red line shown on your copies. As soon, as soon as this is approved by both the Personnel Committee and the Select Board, it, it'll be immediately advertised.
When is the Select Board meeting next? Ah, Select Board. We got to go Personnel. Thank you.
They met, it's going to be June, they just met.
They met just last week, didn't they?
Yes. They met the ninth, they met the 20th, so they'll be meeting again on June 2nd.
Okay, so next week?
Thought that, yeah.
Right, they've already approved it though, so.
Right. Oh, so I move approval.
And second.
All right, take a vote. Stoneye?
Hawkins, I.
Keith, I.
You go, Margaret. You are.
All right, thank you. So Mary, those red lines can be incorporated as permanent changes and it's been fully approved by both Personnel and the Board. Thank you.
Awesome. And then last on our new business is FY '22 Police Department reappointments.
So you have the, the list before you tonight of the police, of the slate of Police Department Personnel. The, I, I recommend that the board approve the reappointments that are listed for the entire Police Department and that those officers that have an asterisk next to their name also be appointed as alcohol license, alcohol license agents for the local licensing authority.
Hey, so moved.
Second, so what is the regulation that says we have to appoint our police officers every year? Because like, would we, would we ever say no? I just try to, I, I, as I constantly look for things we do that don't seem to add value. Telling our police officers that they're, they're continuing to be police officers seems to fall into that category.
And in fact, and in fact, many of the personnel are covered by a collective bargaining agreement. So
Right.
there is no regulation that requires this. This has been past practice here in Berlin.
So we have.
That's a, yeah. Lame answer, lame answer to your question, but.
All right.
The town has, the town has done that.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Let's put it to a vote. Stoneye?
Hawkins, I.
Keith, I.
And then I'd like to look at to, to potentially remove this from something we have to do next year.
Yeah, you need to look into it. Why do we do this?
Yeah.
I ask that question a lot.
Excuse me, on this agenda item through the chair, I had also provided a draft, something that I wanted to attach to the Board and Committee Code of Conduct and wanted to distribute to all the appointed Board and Committee Chairs. And I'm just looking for your support of, of that particular header sheet that I'd like to circulate to Board and Committee Chairs.
So would that be for appointments and reappointments?
Um, I would, well, this would be for all reappointments for the coming cycle and you're not going to be taking those up until June 1st, but
Right.
I would like to, I, I would like to see that the, all reappointees are required to sign and submit the acknowledgement of receipt of the Code of Conduct before taking any official action in their capacity as Board and Committee Members. And that hasn't been required in the past.
And you just took one of the things away from me from my, my board questions and comments.
Oh, sorry.
No, I mean, when I watched that Maya webinar, that was what they suggested that we need to, we need the Code of Conduct signed when appointed or reappointed.
That makes sense. Okay. There you go. So it's a best practice too.
Yes.
Right.
That's, that's, it's just a reminder, you know, that there is a code of conduct.
Do we have a motion? Oh, Mary has a question. Well, there's other things like ethics every two years and Corey annually for those who are subject to it, but there's no, there's no regularity to that.
Right. What would help that? A policy?
Well, are, are, we just, like, if it's due every other year and it's too much to figure out if it's a on-year or off-year, we just do it every year.
The Ethics Commission sends a reminder to municipalities saying that their, the online ethics training is due for various officials, but there's a multitude of things. I, I just, I, I was solely focused on the Code of Conduct at this particular moment.
All right.
It's fine with me.
Okay, so it sounds like a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There we go. Let's put it to a vote. Stoneye?
Hawkins, I.
Keith, I.
Go, Margaret. You're batting a thousand tonight.
I'll continue to look at this and ask, so what is this one doing? Why do we need this one separate from this other thing? Isn't this duplicate of something else?
I sense, I sense something coming up on Scott's goals and objectives to deal with this.
It was part of my goals and objectives sort of at all these, every time we have a meeting, I look at agenda items like, does that add value to the town, you know? And sadly, most of my hire is at the state that's causing us to spend money and time on things that they have no interest in the answer on, but.
Yeah.
But yes, I continue to look at those.
All right. And coming up is our Board's Questions and Comments and Liaison Updates. I will go last.
I, I don't really have anything today. No.
Okay, then, do you want me to go next?
Absolutely.
All right. So on May 5th, that I, I don't think I talked about this with you yet, the Assabit Regional Housing Consortium. There was a discussion on regional housing advocacy program. And the group agreed to have someone come to speak to them from Cape Cod Development Partnership. If we were to join, I believe it was going to be $7,500 per town for each of the eight towns. But I, I think they haven't decided what the date would be for that to happen, for the, for the Cape Cod Development Partnership to come and talk to us. The next meeting is July 6th. I think they're taking a little hiatus in June at 1:00 PM. And then they also did talk about the intermunicipal agreement, adding Berlin to it. hiatus in June at 1:00 PM. And then they also did talk about the intermunicipal agreement, adding Berlin to it. And at some point, we will have to take, we will have to put it on our Select Board Agenda to vote, to be a part of the consortium or be actually to do the IMA. And one of the questions I had asked Margaret about too was Tim Wheeler has been attending all of these meetings and I've been attending. But I wonder if we, the Board should ask Tim if he would like to be appointed to attend the meetings regularly and perhaps if he can't, maybe Eloise could from Housing Partnership. Just so we're sure that, you know, if I don't happen to go, someone is there.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, you know, I don't know whether we have to, we probably need to contact him and ask him if that's okay, but he's been at all the meetings anyway.
Okay.
Then I went to the ZBA meeting on May 12th. I think they had questions about Luis Santos, which I believe that they are talking to him or they should be talking to him. I think we directed, directed him to speak to them. And they, they were talking just sort of amongst themselves that if, even if Luis bought the other lot next to his, it may not give them the land, the land he needs to build a garage with the square footage and the frontage. One of the other things they were asking about was in-person meetings and that they'd be perfectly happy to do Zoom meetings through September. Let's see, what else I had, I had the, I was, I told you about the Maya webinar that I attended. And I told you about needing to have signed Code of Conduct when appointed or reappointed. It was basically a webinar on training and accountability for behavior. And I think that was it.
So Margaret, follow-up question, and Chris juggled my mind. Did Mr. Hanks ever come back? Because I know that, was it Mr. Santos, was he importing soil? And he shouldn't have been, was there, I thought there was an EVA that went by about like a cease and desist potential?
Yeah, so it was actually a pile of brush. And I responded to Mr. Santos that while the Earth Import Bylaw doesn't govern brush, it only governs earth materials. There could be, you know, fire or building code considerations that he'd need to be aware of.
Okay, yeah, because I know that I had reached out to Conservation and Carolyn and Steve Baird had just done a very informal walkthrough on that property. There was never any formal, you know, agreements, approvals for him to do anything. So you know, we need to make sure that Mr. Santos is all buttoned up and nice and tidy with comments from all the boards and he needs to support. So I just had two quick ones. The single bag document, did that get updated? I saw, I started going back and forth a few times. I wasn't quite sure if it was done and like ready for primetime.
Oh, the, the plastic bag band notice?
Yeah.
Mary, was that, through the chair, Mary, was that intended to be red lines or was that just red font to call their attention to it?
Red font to call their attention
Okay.
And to show with the added reasoning for why there's an extension because it was as a courtesy to all the businesses to like draw attention to the fact that it was with their COVID problems in mind that it was extended yet again.
Okay, so that's ready for, that's ready to go.
I have 70 copies of it. We're just working on getting a real list of merchants and the one that was provided late today by the assessors. I have located more than a dozen that are out of business permanently, so I don't know how good the list is, but it's as good as the list will be.
Okay, all right, and I can help push that on our unofficial pages. And then my last one, so you know, you know, open up my phone, you know that one of my pet peeves is that train trash and I swear to God, it will get done at some point. So after I met with the Board of Health, I stepped up my game and I contacted Representative Trahan's office, Representative Kilcoyne's office and Senator Cronin's office and basically pleaded and said, we're stuck. They came through, did what they did and then they left their crap behind. How can you help? So Representative Trahan's office reached out to me the following day, which was kind of cool. Her name is Jocelyn and Representative Trahan's guy reached out. Kilcoyne reached out immediately too. So the response that I have as of yesterday is afternoon peg. CSX has let us know they are coordinating with their engineering team to address the debris issue and they should have an update for us shortly. They didn't provide a definitive timeline for further response, so I will follow up with them in a few days and continue to follow up until we get some answers. I continue to coordinate with our state delegation on this matter if you have any questions. So maybe, maybe kind of sort of, because I went down, they asked for pictures and I gave them close-ups of, you know, the nails and the spikes and tried to make it as nasty as possible and her response was, oh my. So let's wing in a prayer, hopefully we get that train trash will finally get out of Berlin. All right, that's all I got. So looks like we do not have a need for executive session, so I will entertain a motion to go.
Before we jump off, just, I sent the email, but it might be worth just noting, I am going to be out of town on the 28th of June. And so if, you'll need both of you here to have quorum.
From wherever you are, Scott.
I, I might, I might not have internet. I plan on being in an international place that might be far away from.
Oh, nice, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, best, best travels, all right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second the motion to adjourn.
And we will bring it to a vote, Stoneeye?
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
Unanimous.